Before we get started, I want to welcome all of our guests here tonight. We have quite a few. I want to also welcome our in-cast advisor, Mr. Gary Jacob, who drove here to be with us. Tonight, or today, as you all know, was D-Day exactly 75 years ago, June 6th, 1944. And we just want to take a second to remember the memory of all those brave soldiers who stormed the beach at Omaha Beach and dropped behind the lines in parachutes at Normandy. That Allied invasion was what actually led to the occupation of the German in France being broken up. So, those are very brave men. I know we have also veterans here in our group tonight. Just, would you mind raising your hand if you are a veteran of any kind? We want to thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Let's go through the roll call, please. Black Mayor Watts?
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott? Absent. Councilman Evil?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Councilman Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Moore?
Here.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes that were sent to you? Of course, can I get a motion to approve them and then we'll have discussion if there's any?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Is any discussion of the minutes? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, we already got that.
I'm sorry, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right, the minutes are approved and sent to us. Okay, we have a consideration of the bills over 2,000.
Motion.
Motion to approve these?
Yes, ma'am.
Right here, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Steve, I was just, the one bill for Wascon, that was to replace a...
Replace the 15 horsepower Barra pump at the main lift station.
Okay.
We're replacing it with a 20 horsepower Vortex pump.
Okay. How long is that going to last, this?
Well, we got a five-year warranty on it. We've got a 90-day buy and try. And plus, they've installed a bypass pump until this job gets done for no cost. So, that's the best option we could go with.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, all in favor of approving these? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, both are approved. We have the reports first from the mayor. First of all, we had our first meeting with just the residents to come and talk about what they would like to see happening here in Carthage. It went very well. We had some great conversation. We hope we can do this more often where it's just their voices talking. I know they can come here to the council meeting and that's another approach, but I think they felt very comfortable just talking among themselves and coming up with actually some very good ideas. So, we'll try to do that, just a very casual conversation, maybe once every month or so. The downtown facade is moving right along. One building has already had the bids approved. There was only one bid that came in that was for Mr. Eber's building, and so we're moving forward with that. There's, that's in progress there. If it's okay with you, we'll go ahead and approve that bid.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we move forward with that. Thank you. Couple of other things. Val State is, the other workshop we had went very well. They're still trying to get some accredited classes here in the fall. I was told the swimming pool is best day ever, Memorial Day, so that's really good. We're hoping they can make a profit this year. We added a new park bench and picnic table to the Turner basketball court. When we will drive by there, take a look, the kids seem to like it. And then, just a reminder, the letter that was sent out to the residents, there's a company called Trees &amp; More that's going to be picking up our brush on Mondays, so you just need to call that number that was in your letter, ask them to come by and pick it up, and they'll negotiate the terms, whether it's just a tiny little bid or a lot. They'll negotiate terms with you. They promised us that they would be very reasonable in their terms on this. So, just a reminder of that. That's all I have to report. Mr. Attorney, you have?
I don't have anything to report. Be glad to answer your questions if they do have any.
Just if I'm back up, what was the name of that company with the...
It's called Trees &amp; More, and there was a letter sent to all the residents that has the contact information for them, three different contact numbers. And they'll be by every Monday, so you can call them on Mondays to pick up trash.
They didn't give any...
Brush, excuse me, brush.
They didn't give any idea of which...
Well, it's just, it's all depending on how tiny or how large it is, but they can actually chip it there for you, too, if you want to. If you want to use it for mulch, they can do the chipping right there. So, if you, when you call them, if you say, "I'd like to have it chipped for mulch for my lawn," they'll be willing to do that also.
It would help if they, we had like a basic price or, you know, a lot of people wouldn't call.
Well, I will see if they can come up. I think we'd have to have a measurement of what they're picking up, but we could try to see if they can get...
I mean ballpark figure.
Yeah, I'll certainly make enough to call it for that. Okay, our next report would be from the water plant? Mr. Reese?
Yes, ma'am. I had mentioned the other day when we were...
Do you mind if I ask you this, just so we can all... I know it, I know, I'm terrible. I'm terrible.
I had mentioned the other day when we were at our budget meeting that I got a problem with the pump house, and it has progressed a lot this week. And it's going to be about $6,000. I've still got $13,000 remaining in my repair and maintenance budget. I have enough to go ahead and get it done in this budget, and I do need to go ahead and address that immediately. It could do damage to new pumps. It could do damage to them if I don't get those, get this taken care of right away. So, I don't know how y'all need to take care of that.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is there anything else? And then we'll, if there's a way we can maybe handle that, I'll check with our attorney, but...
Okay, that's all.
I think if we suspend the rules, because normally we would have to come back during the regular meeting, but could we suspend the rules and vote on, or letting her go ahead with that?
And I'm sorry, what were the amounts? And did we have the required number of bids or...
It's going to be about $6,000, and I have remaining $13,000 in the budget in repair and maintenance.
Normally on reports, we would make a motion, but since it's not on our, it's not listed on our agenda...
Right, I'm more concerned just to make sure that we've gotten enough, the right amount of quotes that are necessary for that.
We don't have to bid if it's under $10,000.
If it's under 10,000, but do you have to get written quotes, more than one?
I think we can just get one. I mean, if it's under the amount.
That's what I was told yesterday.
I don't, I don't think it hurts to get more bids. I know we're not required, but just, you know, if it does, you know...
Normally I do, but...
How much time do you have? How urgent is this?
Well, till the end of June.
Well, I'm saying what damage can be done while we wait.
Well, these are two new pumps that cost about $25,000 or $30,000 a piece, so I don't want to rebuy those.
Well, my point is, do we have time to get bids and do all that, or is it urgent that we need to go?
We need to get it done. We do need to get it done. Normally, on a situation like this, the people that are so used to working on these have a better rate anyway, because when you bring somebody in that doesn't, you have a lot more hours involved. And I've done that before, and then you're having to get these people to come back and redo it, and it'll cost me more money in the long run. So, it's whatever y'all want me to do.
What's the part called again?
Well, it's actually to put freshwater flushing down there to get to keep the grit off of those pumps. You know, I was telling you about it, pulling seals on this new pump.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I need to get that done. And there's actually some electrical, some old lines and everything like that. It's quite a, quite a big job.
Okay. Do we need a motion, or can we just do it?
We have to suspend the rules because it's not on the agenda, so could I have a motion to suspend the rules and then vote on this?
I think wouldn't it be just, she'd just go and do it, and then we put it on the next, basically, one of the, we're going to get the bill next time, say $6,000.
Yeah, that's true, because we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it. She's got the money, that's what the money's there.
Yeah, she already got there.
I mean, that's why you have the money.
What was the money amount you had?
I have a little over $13,000 left. This is about a $6,000 job.
Yeah, I don't think it requires a vote.
Mr. Moore?
I would probably go ahead and authorize her to make this expenditure based on finding that this is an immediate need. And again, I'm looking at what I'm, I'm seeing one provision for purchases under $10,000 for foreign public bidding and not any other provisions. Again, I think just the safest thing to do would just go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Hear a motion then, please, too.
So, a motion is to suspend the rules?
Second.
Should we suspend the rules and then vote on it?
I think yes.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules so we can vote on this, please. That's called?
Second.
Okay, second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we'll go to the motion to accept and approve this.
Approve this and authorize her.
Motion to approve and authorize.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Reese, you're approved.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, no, ma'am, thanks.
And Mr. Steve, did you have any? Go ahead.
I'll just talk a little bit about the current situation there at the main lift station. It basically pulls the sewer water in from the northwest side of town, say the hospital, Highway 25 coming industrial. We have two 15 horsepower Barra pumps. They're 16-year-old. Well, one of them, when we pulled it, it was plugged, it was actually, it was something inside of it that's messed up. It's got to be rebuilt. So, what we did, it's kind of an emergency situation. I got with Wascon. They installed a bypass pump, so now we do have a backup pump in case the owner goes out. The option to rebuild it, they don't know what it'd be till they take it apart. We had one rebuilt in 2016, cost us $5,860 to rebuild. A second option was to buy a new Ebera 15-horsepower pump, and to get it installed was $8,100. The third option, they have a 20-horsepower Raffundo's Vortex pump, which this should help with the clogging problems with it having. But it's got a five-year warranty, 90-day try and buy, and they, we'll install it and everything for $7,454. So, checked, and we got $15,797 left in the collection budget. So, that's the money that we need to fix that pump with, so I want to let y'all aware of that. That's the option we went with, and we had to get the ball rolling on it. So, that's basically what I got. And hopefully, this pump, if it does good, if the owner goes out in the future, we'll be going in that direction. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And we have approved that, so we did approve that, so thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Chief here, Police Department?
Tommy's here for...
Tommy, do you have anything to report?
I don't have a show. I'm looking for the guy all day and night.
Okay. Any questions about our monthly report that you can give us? Chief Hyde, do you have fire report?
Submitted monthly report, small volume, which includes in-house fires.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Les?
I'm here.
Okay. There you are, okay. Anything to report?
I've got any questions.
Okay. Does, on the other side, does Derek have anything to back up?
Is that Derek?
Okay.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. We do want to thank you for the park bench that looks very nice down there and the picnic table.
Yeah, I know, it's turned around.
Well, actually, the kids did.
Oh, did they?
They rearranged it down there. It was, when we went down to make their picture, they said, "Well, let's twist it around," so they did. But they really, they're already enjoying it. Thank you. Our city recorder?
I just have a couple of things. We interviewed, we had 54 applicants for the city cashier position, and we interviewed 10 of them, and we've narrowed them down. We narrowed them down to top three, but we have one that we are highly recommending, and that'll come later on. I just want to let y'all know how many we interviewed. The other thing is, our next council meeting in July is on the 4th of July. So, if y'all want to reschedule that, we need to look at what day you want to do it.
Do it the following Thursday?
The 11th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is everybody good with that?
I'm good.
I'm good.
When?
The 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have for right now. So, July 11th? Uh-huh. Everybody's good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can I hear a motion that we do that, please?
Motion to have a city council meeting at 6:00 PM on July 11th?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we've moved the meeting to July 11th. Thank you. Any questions on that?
That's all I've got for right now.
Okay. So, we'll go to unfinished business. Someone wanted to talk about the Water Street property that we still have, and don't know what we're dealing with.
Yes, just wondering, city's got an update on what's going on with that property. Just wanted to get an update, that's all.
It's just still there. We haven't heard back from the Habitat folks if they want to use it.
Are we all cool just sitting on that for a while? Table?
We need to get it cleaned up, though. It needs to be cleaned up, like...
I saw it.
Yeah, I mean, like, if I had a house right next to it, I'd be pretty mad. And if I was the bank, I'd be mad, and I mean, it's just a...
We require the systems to clean, to tear stuff, so I think we're under the same...
Right. So, I don't know what needs to be done, Les, but I said, I don't know how you go about that, but...
I'll take it if it's what y'all want.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Take care of it. The electrical and the museum, again, we had three people who were contacted. We had the same bids that we had last time. The lowest bid is $5,500, but that was without adding any of that closet space. Whether we have the funds to do this, that y'all will have to discuss that, because we, you know, we're coming up on the budget a little bit short this time, so if you want to put it off till later, we can do that. If we can see if we can get our local sales tax back on budget, what would y'all like to do about that?
Can you refresh the boardroom on that closet space?
Well, it's been used as storage, but it's a nice-sized room that we would like to expand the youth center into. I've talked with the museum, we've cleaned it out. Most of what was in there was stuff that had been there for many, many years, and so I think they're arranging to move their storage somewhere else, and we're still working on the details. But it would be a very useful room. It could be used for a boardroom when the museum has their board meetings. It could be used for kids to do their music lessons. We give free music lessons to kids in the community. And so, I think it would be very useful and probably not very expensive. I think we talked about, you had mentioned what it was going to cost just to put some lights and plugs in there.
Right, we were talking about the, just overhead lights and then some plugs around the wall. It's very simple, and he said it wouldn't add more than $500 back on, so that we'd take it back up to $6,000.
It does need a ceiling. The ceiling is about half gone, so it would need the ceiling repaired.
Is it a drop-in like this?
Uh-huh. Just from years of miss, you know, not being used.
Could take a break.
But the roof has been replaced, so it's not going to leak again, but it's leaked and ruined.
So, we could do the electrical...
The whole building was like that when we moved in. We had to redo it all.
We do like the electrical and then do the ceiling later, or the drop-in ceiling, you know, on a different bid, because opposite electricians aren't there, so...
So, we're talking about two different areas. One is the performance area that's 1,900 square feet that isn't being used right now because it's not up to code with electricity. And then this is a space off of it. So, the actual performance hall was what he, the low estimate was $5,500 for that. And that would be, I think we sent y'all that, but it would be doing overhead LED lights. It would be doing plugs all the way around the wall. It would be putting a new amp, new...
Circuit box, or fuse box, whatever.
Yes, in there, putting exit lights over that big door and fixing the door. We're going to have to fix that, too, but...
Do we just, do we need to just get that, that little bit, or do we need, are we supposed to get that rebid with the around $500 bucks or whatever on it to approve it, or do we, can we approve it with...
Well, it would, it would come up $500 if we had added all the two spaces for...
So, just add $500 to that?
So, it'd be about $6,000 to do that.
About $6,000, okay.
And again, in consideration of our budget, it's up to y'all, whatever you want to do. We can cancel it till later or do it...
I mean, we got to do it anyways.
Make a motion, we do it.
So, I hear a motion that we take the low bidder, which is Harper, electricity of, I guess it would be $6,000 now with the other added onto it.
Do you want to add in that room, too?
Yes, that we redo the performance hall and also the extra room. And we probably, if they're going to start using it, we probably need to redo the lease on it.
We, that's, we're working on it because...
Okay, because is that come up this year? Do we have a one-year lease, or is it a five-year? I don't remember how we set that up.
It looks like the lease amendment that was done 2017 actually expired the end of 2018, so...
Okay.
Yes, we're working on it.
It looks like it removed the automatic renewal provision, so I think we probably need to go ahead and do a renewal of that soon.
And we'll probably have to get a lease for this spot, too, just because any of the building will...
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the room actually used for?
Nothing right now.
I mean, is it just for museum performances, that sort of thing?
It was, originally, they were going to fix it up to have receptions and concerts and things in there.
They've had a couple of things like that in there, yeah, just like a book sign and things like that.
What I would like to do in order to help recoup some of this money is kind of do what the courthouse does, to rent it out from the city.
Like for showers and things like that?
Sure, yeah, for those kinds. And once it gets up to code, again, we can rent it.
Last reunion.
And hopefully, recoup some of the money that we're spending on it.
Yeah, my good, my good.
But it's, it's just not for museum purposes?
Right, right. And it would actually have a separate contract and a separate agreement, because the museum and everything else is excluded. This room is excluded from those lease agreements right now, so it's just...
Is there a way to get in there without going through the museum?
Yes, there will be. There needs to be a new door, but there will be.
Yeah, on board.
And it has a handicap entrance, and so that's why I'm saying that room next to it could be useful to go with that room. It just needs to be up to code, because that's the only room in the, in the building that's not. So, if we can bring that room a little bit more useful, I think it would be beneficial to the museum and who uses that even.
And still, and we could maybe recoup some of our money from renting it out. It's a nice space. If you've been in there, it's got the...
It's a really nice place. We've used it. We've had some use of this in there when it was open. It's really nice.
So, do we have a motion for this?
We have a motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of taking the low bid from Harper's of somewhere between $5,500 and $6,000? It's whatever he can reduce it down to. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. Okay, this payment to the school bus driver. We did ask Mr. Moore to do a little research on that to see if we actually have any kind of contract or any legal obligation. Did you, did you...
Well, I've just reached out to the attorney that represented the Board of Education, and I think he contacted you originally just to ask if there were any agreements in place that maybe the city wasn't aware of, and I didn't get a response. So, again, as we discussed last month, I had looked at the statute that was referenced in that email, and there is a provision, I think, you know, it would give the town authority to enter into some sort of an agreement to address the situation, but certainly wouldn't require that to be a contribution for a bus driver. And so, I just expressed in the email, I think I copied you, Mayor, that we, of course, the town would be glad to look at any special hazard zones and try to figure out a way to address them, but right now, I thought the position of the council was to not do that contribution for the next fiscal year. But again, I haven't received any response back, so...
And we haven't found any, or I haven't found any in our files that would show that we had ever contractual agreement for that, so...
And I, I mean, I think I want to, obviously, we want to keep good relationships with the school board, but the other thing is, we've been told by the school, school board that this is required, and it's not. And we're like, so we're out $13,000 times 18 years. That's a lot of money that we've lost in our revenue. I think the school board would understand as far as us not doing this anymore. We need to be improving some of these sidewalks infrastructures regardless of it's school bus or not. You know, there's some, y'all were talking about the one, the one street close to your house right there from the cemetery down?
Yeah.
You know, having a sidewalk, you know, making things more uniform, and it takes time to do all that, but you know, I'd say, you know, that's $13,000, you know, that's a year, and that adds up. And we keep this, we set a precedent with it, we can add up another 18 years with it, and you know, you're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Just, just so we're staying with Mr. Robert, can we have a motion? And then a second, then we'll get into that discussion.
Well, and I mean, I'm not sure what action is required.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think there's a change in action.
Because I haven't heard any comment from the school board. The school board said it was required. Is that information you got?
From what I've heard, now that...
That's not what I was sent to leave.
No, not sent, no. That's, that's what was the pretext for why we've been doing this in the past, is that it was a requirement by the state that if you have something, it's about a one-mile ra, something where there's a one-mile radius. Am I correct on that, Matt?
Yeah.
There's a one-mile radius, and we're looking into it, and there's no requirement that, we have the authority. We can enter a contract, but we don't have to. And every single person in here is already paying county taxes for that. And so, we're basically double taxing, we're doubling down on it for, because they're paying city taxes as well, so it's, it's kind of like, let's, let's use that money towards[1514.41] it's kind of like, let's, let's use that money towards something else, you know.
Well, it's northern municipality and the county explaining.
Exactly, yeah. So why are we the exception?
And just to remind you, I think we voted last time not to do this, so are we going to go with what we voted last time, or what's a?
Well, there's, I don't think, unless somebody makes a motion to change, the decision is already that we are not doing it.
Is anybody okay with that? Okay. So we'll stay with what we voted on last time to not continue paying that.
And if I do receive, you know, an email back and any sort of evidence and an agreement that might affect the, the city, of course, I'll forward that on to you and let you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is brush pickup expenses, fire permit. I'm not sure, Councilman Evil, what do you have in mind?
Yes, I just want to bring this up. And, and again, I realize that I'm, I'm not born and raised here, and where, when I grew up Mount Juliet, it was not uncommon, everybody burned their brush. It was just very common. And I understand that we don't burn brush here. And it was kind of one of those things, you saw everybody constantly burning brush. And now, during like a dry time like this, it wouldn't happen. You'd have a van on burning. But during normal, everything going on, it'd be burning. And it would leave that option up to the citizen to be able to burn. Now, you have a fire hazard that goes with that as well. So my recommendation was, we issue, possibly just issue some burn permits, and you know, throw five dollars on it. And that basically is an administration fee. And that way, the fire department knows if someone's burning something, they can do that. Now, Barbara and I were talking earlier about, like, if there's, that, that includes the, we don't know if that includes the, what do we call, the little?
Like a fire pit.
Fire pit, yeah. The little fire pits. I don't know if that includes the fire pits or not, but you know, like, if somebody has like three sticks, or like one limb came down, and they want to go, you know, they don't want to go pay a company, you know, twenty, thirty bucks to haul this limb off, you know, why not burn it? Now, if someone obviously, as well, had like a whole tree and all this stuff, they would go ahead and hire a whole company to come in. They wouldn't burn that. And it just, to me, it's just more common sense to say, hey, let's let people burn their stuff. Obviously, we won't be courteous of our neighbors and whatnot, but you know, get a burnt permit, five bucks. Five bucks to tell you I'm burning, having a fire, and someone's on call, I don't think it's a big thing, Joe.
I think we need to hear from our fire chief. What are the current rules?
Common sense is very uncommon. Who determines how much can be burned and which can't. One of the reasons this was started, people used to burn their leaves on the side of the street, and it became a public hazard, because you couldn't see it drive down the street with the smoke. That's how this got started.
Gotcha.
Again, common sense is not common. How do you put the cut on here? How much is it? I don't have a problem with permits, not, not any at all. But if you're going to burn a whole tree, somebody might say it's a little tiny tree.
Yeah, where do you draw the line?
That's the problem I have with it, is not having some sort of quantifiable guideline.
Yeah, oh, well, I mean, it's something, I mean, I don't think we had to vote on it tonight. We just started kind of looking into it. I just know taxpayers already have been paying in the past. They've been paying for this brush service. Now they're not getting it. Now they're going to have to pay extra for it. And I've had a lot of people calling me saying, hey, I need to do something with my, my brush.
We did our best to keep it.
Yeah, and we did our best to keep it, but let's, let's come up with a solution, and so that being said.
They, no, we, we never paid for brush.
They didn't charge for brush, unless it was just a, a massive.
Who would pick up the brush?
Our guests.
Did they get paid?
If you remember, the reason, the reason we can't, Mr. Councilman, the reason we can't do this anymore is because the landfill felt they had a permit from T. D., which they never had.
I understand.
And they can't take ours anymore.
And I'm just looking, I'm not looking for who's to blame or anything like that.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's why we're going to do it anymore.
Yeah. And I think it, I think it's, I think you know, raised some great points, where we can maybe look at, you know, maybe look at some other permits from other cities, like how they, what kind of rules do they have? Like, here's your brush permit, you can do this, you can't do that. And just, I, I mean, my recommendation tonight was going to ask Mr. Hyde to look into it, and then maybe we discuss it next, next month. But I, I think it's, it's who's us to try to find a common sense, low cost solution.
But what is that going to do to insurance rates? Because right now, no one's allowed to burn, so there's not a burn hazard for most of the properties in Smith County. If you're allowing people to burn, insurance companies are going to look at that as increasing the risk to all the property they're covering.
I've, I've, I mean, again, I'm only working on my personal experience. Never had an insurance. I have the same insurance here, here at one of my properties, I have the same insurance here, and the fire, they, they're not, they don't put anything into the two differences.
Can I suggest that we, we check with Mr. Hyde, and that we do some research on this?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's, that's my suggestion.
We can table it and talk about it next time.
But there's no area that the brush can be taken to, besides the landfill, that's in the town and city?
No, no. And you can't even store it for long in your own property, because there's T. D. rules against that, too. In Hartsfield, where we checked, they don't pick up brush, they don't pick it up in Smithville anymore, they don't pick it up. In Lafayette, they, they have some area they take it to, but it's, it's someone who's agreed to take it. I don't know.
So if they refuse to, like, leave it out there and let it dry and whatever, if they refuse to haul it off?
Well, some people have already called, because they, we've.
I'm seeing it now.
Yeah. It's, it's, we're not allowed to do something, but then we're not allowed to have a solution unless we go specifically with one company. And to me, like, it's like, you know, like, it's just, it seems to me, and I get, and I, and I do take account of insurance rates, it just seems to me common sense. Burn your sticks, you know, I mean, we've been doing it for thousands of years. It's, you know, I don't think it's much, you know. I just don't, I, I, I think there's ways we can, we can do this with common sense.
Let's, in fact, let's, let's all do some research, because I think there are probably insurance things, like, like Councilman Scott said, I think there's probably EPA rules, who knows, about putting so much smoke into the air. I don't know how that all goes, but let's, let's do some research, and then come back next time if you don't mind. I'd love to find some solutions. It would be great. That's one solution, is this company. There may be other companies out there who want to do this, which would be fine. We may have a lot of entrepreneurs who figure out ways to do things with our brush, so.
But, but going back to what I said, if they don't haul it off, will they be fined for not hauling it off?
Probably piled up on the side of the road.
It's just going to lay there. Because I've had people say, well, I'm just going to let it there.
There's piles over here right now.
So I've seen it now, yeah.
Have, have they just not called this company to see how much, if they can do it?
I just see it.
Are they required to allow to, to move it?
You guys, I'm there with you. We, our hands are tied. We can't take it to the landfill anymore.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm saying, like, you know, all of our hands are tied, and it's like, we, they've, you know, they figure their tax.
Less his hands are tied, everybody's hands are tied.
They figure their taxpayer money's been going to haul this off, and then they're not going to go pay something extra to go haul it off, they're just going to stack it.
Actually, no. Anyway, we'll, we'll revisit it. Let's think about it and revisit it next month.
I guess you do have to think about enforcement. If we now, if it's not going to be picked up, we not only have, we do have the offer that it can be picked up for a price, but what if people just stack it out there?
Force people to pay for services.
Then we have to think about enforcement. That could be a fire hazard.
Well, and just so you know, we did try for a month to get a company to, we kept picking it up and putting it out here, and they hauled it off. I think we had over two thousand.
Several thousand.
Several thousand dollars in bills, so we'd have to raise property tax to cover that. So there's not a good solution. I would love for y'all to find something, seriously. We've all been hit at the same time with this. It would be great if they would get a permit to take this out there, but apparently T. D. is not going to let them do that.
I ain't going to raise no property taxes.
Okay. Okay, business trash.
The sodas, the sodas are not here tonight, because I know that, I think Brian and Andy were going to be heading that up, so we can skip over that.
What are street projects?
I was just asking for an update. I know we used to do updates on the grant or the loan project, so.
Again, you remember the lady from, from the state revolving fund loans, when they came out, and basically kind of reiterating the two loans that we, were applied for in 2017. Those are the ones that we'd have to raise a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars every year in order to qualify for those. There are better loans out there, and they've told us if we can hold off until this August, we could apply for some of these new loans that are principal forgiveness, which would help, we not only do those two lines, but can help us get sewer and water lines all through the city. But, but these particular ones, we would have to probably raise our sewer and water rates, and we have to guarantee that we can bring in a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars extra each year, since we're going into reserves with our new budget. I don't see this being possible.
All right, so we're looking at, this is pretty much dead till August, then?
Well, I think these two loans, it just doesn't seem to me, and maybe y'all can speak to this, I don't see why we would pay four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand when we might get principal forgiveness on loans to do all of our sewer and water lines.
What is the timeline to get, the one, if we wait till August to get started and get this re?
Well, we have to get on the priority list, and Mr. Jekyll, I don't know if you could help us a little bit with that, but we get on the priority list.
All I know, all I can tell you is that the, is their SRF folks are hopeful of once they, and you might recall, they talked about when she was here, that they have a community that they're working with right now to do this as a kind of a model, a test case in East Tennessee for that, the program that you all are talking about. And once they get the, the kinks worked out at the process, and they know that it works, then that's where the August timeframe came from. They're hopeful that by the time August rolled around, they'd be in a place where they could offer that program a wider scale to, to a number, a number of different communities. I think you all are probably already on that priority list.
Yes, we are. And they are really anxious to help us, too. I mean, they're, they have been, they've been very open to trying to help us, us get some of those pri, principal forgiveness loans, which would be great. I mean, we're talking about doing our whole city, planning, development, and construction for less than, actually, these two loans would cost us, so.
So do we, so would we recommend we just table this till August, and revisit in August to see possibly?
I would suggest that, because again, unless you can show proof that we can raise a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, I feel we're requiring that letter to the former mayor. I don't think we could, I don't think we could qualify. And that's basically saying we can't qualify unless we can prove that we can do that.
Gotcha.
And I, I don't know how we can bring in that much more money.
Well, don't they have to just do a new audit, to show they have to make money?
They just need additional information.
Right.
Since water rates were increased since the original information was given.
Let's look at our budget tonight, and then maybe we'll know a little bit more, because our budget, we're struggling, just like everyone else is with this property local option tax that we, that we're losing.
But they're looking at the water utility revenues, not cities.
Right, but we've got some big items coming up, too. We've got a water tank that's going to be a hundred forty thousand new debt that we're going into. So if you don't mind, if we could just table this to next month, let's skip through the budget, and then we'll know kind of what kind of money we're talking about for these, if that's okay.
I mean, I, I don't mind, because I don't, I don't have a solution right now, but you know, I'm all ears to a, a different solution. I just, I just wanted an update, because I got, you know, people ask about it a lot, so.
Well, you've got to copy this letter, I think, that we've sent out. So again, if we can come up with a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars extra, I'm, I'm, that's fine, but I would save that same money if we could apply to these better loans that were going to be available, and maybe in August, with our principal forgiveness, that whole amount we're talking about, what, seven hundred fifty thousand or whatever it is, would almost cover all the water and sewer lines in our, in our town with the principal, with the principal forgiveness. So it's just how do we use this money wisely?
Okay. I mean, I'm finding a table. Does everybody else find a table?
Let's do it.
Okay, to next one, table it. We'll talk about it. By then, we'll know a little bit more about our budget, too, after tonight, so. Thank you. And that's the same with third?
Third man, yeah.
Okay. And then item number eight, engineer sharing plan, city engineer sharing plan.
I was just wondering, did the city talk at all to the county about possibly, about that being an option, or do we need to kind of make a motion as a council, like, and I did, I kind of thought about what you said, Matt, as far as like, is, you know, we were talking about the city shared engineering plan, where I think on, on a lot of this, it's, it's where the, more of the team comes in, is when there's actual, and again, I think Jerry's here to talk, too. He can, you know, I don't want to speak for Jerry, but when we're just doing like engineering inspections and things like that, I'm thinking, you know, we might be able to save, you know, quite a few hundred thousand dollars if we did some kind of a joint plan with the other cities and with the county, and we all split the costs on just hiring a full-time engineer. Again, like, if we need to contract out just, you know, small parts of that, I still think even with contracting that out, we're going to save quite a bit of taxpayer money. But is this, is this something y'all would be willing to let the city investigate and start talking to the county about, and not make any decisions on, see what possibilities are, then bring those back to us, and we can make a decision based on what the city finds out on it? Would you all be willing to do that?
I don't think it ever is a problem discussing an option.
Okay.
You know, may not, when, once you discuss it and you find out it's not viable.
It might not be, yeah. It absolutely might not. So it's not, I'm just trying to, you know, every little bit we can save is better. So are you, are y'all fine if, Mayor, Mayor, if you want to start talking with the county on it?
I'll be glad to talk to them.
Okay.
See what's.
Is that okay with everybody?
No.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay. That's all of our unfinished business, our new business, the Emanuel House. I know you've been very patient, and thank you for waiting. We've got Pastor Monica Maude here to speak to us about that.
Hey, first of all, I just want to thank you guys for helping in the past. I don't know if you know, but there's a whole new board, and we're reopening the Emanuel House, which is a transis, transitional living home for women and some children that need a place to gather some more tools in their tool belt to live successfully as they leave jail or prison, or recovery, or homelessness, or domestic violence, whatever the case may be. We, I just want to, first of all, extend an invitation to the open house, which will be June twenty-third from one to four. And we'd love to take you around and show you around. It's pretty renovated inside. We've done, we received a grant from HUD to redo some electrical root work and some structural things. The house is a little old, needed some, some work. We were blessed by many members of the community. In fact, I see some of the people here that sponsored rooms and have redone rooms and made them look lovely. The research has shown that women stay and finish their program if they're not in a hurry to leave, and so making it a little bit nicer makes people want to stay a little longer and get the tools in their tool belt. We hope to open July first. We've got to get a few more things renovated. We've got Harper Electric coming, but just to give you an update, we've had about six hundred man-hours from community members volunteering their time, renovating things, fixing things, doing things in the home. We've had close to fifteen thousand dollars donated from businesses and interested people in the community of materials to replace broken things. And then we've, we've had another close to ten thousand to fifteen. We were trying to, the problem is it, it changes daily, so, but people that, and the renovation of the rooms, and the adoption of the rooms, and the renovation of the rooms, that, that's close to what's been spent on the rooms themselves. So we haven't applied for any grants yet, because the, well, we have, we've applied for a few, but most of them won't give us any money until we open. So we're kind of, none, none of them are giving us any money until we open. So, but we, we plan to do that. Once the house is full, we should be really close to self-sufficient, unless we want to engage in any other services to the women. But we're thankful for, we know the city has given them money in the past. We're thankful about that. I know there's big talk right now about charitable contributions. We are a 501(c)(3), but we wouldn't really be considered a charitable contribution, because what we do for the city and the county is we provide job stability, we provide education for women, things that the county would, we keep women from having their children go in foster care, which costs taxpayers money. We keep women from being on the streets, which creates jail, taking up jail space. So we have a lot of things that we, we will provide that will keep the county and the city from expending money. So we hope that we can continue to be in your budget. I know it's not a ton of money, but listen, we take whatever we can. It's, the women are not going to live there for free. They will pay to live there. And so we're hoping that that can continue. Thank you. If any, if anybody has any questions, Holly's on the board, I'm on the board, Bill's on the board. We'll be happy to answer any questions about the house.
And when do you expect to open again?
The plan is July first.
July first.
With an open house on June twenty-third, we'd love to see all of you there.
You can see all the rooms.
To tour the home, see what's inside, see what the plan looks like. Each woman has an individualized plan. They will have to complete while they're, while they're there. Good process.
The new security system. So we have a lot of really great things that are happening, and we have at least three calls weekly for people that want to live there. And some even from, that you were here and had to leave the state when it closed, because they had nowhere to live, they want to come back to finish. They're, you know, they're still in recovery, they're still, you have to be clean and sober to live there, by the way. They're still in recovery, but they have nowhere to live, so.
I believe you, you have given us your, a copy of your budget, which is required.
Yeah, it's all into the budget committee and everything already, yes. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I mean, we have it on file, too, here, so I think that's one of the requirements. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other immediate needs that you could share with us?
Do we, do we have time?
The list is endless. I mean, like, if you want to nitpick, we need a vacuum, we need, you know, we need some things like that. Of course, we still need money, because initially, some of the women, we're going to be asking some businesses and churches and community groups to set up scholarship funds for, because they start accruing rent when they first come, whether they can pay it or not. And then when they get to a state where they can pay rent, they'll pay extra to pay their back rent plus their forward rent. But we would love to see a plan where if a woman achieves a certain level of achievement, she can apply for a scholarship with one of the local banks, or one of the local businesses, or one of the local community groups, to pay off some or all of her back rent. So now she's only responsible for what she's got going forward. I mean, I see that as a good caveat for someone who's done all the hard work to get down the road. All the rooms have been adopted, and in fact, that was a pie in the sky idea, was we were hoping for two rooms, and all ten bedrooms and four bathrooms, and the kitchen, and the living room, and the outdoor area has been adopted. And I think if I'd had more rooms, I probably could have got those adopted, too. The community has been overwhelmingly supportive. But, but we do, with food, as, as we open, people bringing food in will be good, because they're responsible. But, you know, we don't, not going to have cook or maid, a chef, we're not having those things. So they'll, they'll like that. If you, if you're a group, or you are part of a group that helps women get those tool belt, tools in their tool belt, you know, if you have classes or expertise, dress for success, writing a resume, parenting, whatever, let us know, let the director know. We're currently in the process. I think tonight, as we speak, they're interviewing for a director, and so they'll need to know those things.
Will the director live there?
No, no, sir. But this is one thing, this is good, I'm glad you asked that. The director will not live there. We don't want the director to live there, because we feel like that's a really good way to get burned out, and the separation will be nice. They'll work forty to fifty hours a week, but we will have house managers. They're people who have completed that program or similar programs.
Much supervisor.
That will be there. So at any given moment, either a house manager or the director will be there. The women will never be left.
What hours are they?
To their twenty, to their own devices. And that's, you know, you're typically not in that home if you've been great at making your choices. So we just need someone to help guide them through choices.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Monica, probably just if you, if you're at grocery store, you think they pick up extra, roll of pulp paper or something like that?
Women's products, staples for the kitchen. We're so blessed that local, three FCE groups in Smith County have taken over, and one of them is doing the whole kitchen and new dishes and the whole thing. So we're really blessed. But any help we can get would be great. We'd love to see y'all there on the twenty-third.
Thank you very much. And it stated, they have given us the budget, and that's one of the requirements for us to consider. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much for.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Second item is River City Ball summary discussion. Who's, Mr. Bill, who's, who's, okay.
Ms. Virginia's going to speak.
Do you want to take one and pass it? So I have just put together a little packet for you guys, some information about the River City Ball. We did this last year after the event, just to kind of report on how it works, because it was our first year, and it seemed to work well, so I thought I would provide you guys with a few things. We, first included, just a thank you, which I will just read to you guys. We would like to extend our greatest thanks. We would like to extend our greatest thanks for your support of the Second Annual River City Ball. This event continues to grow and it could not be done without you all. We are excited to share that we have given over $10,000 towards scholarships and causes in the last two years. As this event grows in popularity and as we refine our planning, we anticipate that amount to grow. Just within the last year, we were able to double our sponsorship and ticket sales and triple the amount of money we donated. We hope to have your continued support for this event. And I have, just to run through the packet, I have included a list of our board members and committee members who've been part of planning this event. A list of sponsors and there's a designation for those that have participated for the last two years. And then I have included a letter just requesting to do this again next year. We would like to do it on the same weekend, it would be May 9th. And we would like to, again, have the streets blocked Friday evening if you guys are willing. And preferably have the event from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday. And then if possible, we would like to keep the block in front of Main Street courthouse blocked until Sunday so the tent could stay up until Sunday morning for the tent vendor because he's there till 2 o'clock in the morning to get that down. So, just out of respect for him, if we are able to do this there, we'd like to ask for that. And then again, for the city hall parking lot, that seems to work really well for our valet. So, I'd be appreciated if we are able to do this again. And I've also included our ABC license for this event and a copy of our liability insurance, just proof of liability. And then a couple of support letters. And the first one is from Bob Williamson, who is not a resident of Smith County and he did attend and he did support this event. So, I just thought that was some interesting, something interesting to include for you guys. So, and then the very last two documents are the scholarship application that we provide for the high schools and the fundraising college application that we release every year. But we just wanted to be here and answer any questions you all may have and ask for support for next year.
I do have something that was raised to me by the police chief, I guess. The valet parking, they did block the police entrance, so we'll need to kind of have to address that.
Okay.
On that. I do have a question. Have we ever considered just taking this inside the courthouse rather than on the street in front of the courthouse? Upstairs on the second floor?
That's county property, they don't allow alcoholic beverages.
Well, actually, we have an ordinance against it too, that's why I was wondering about that. The city has an order against alcohol on any public property or sidewalks or streets. So, I wasn't quite sure how we got around that, very honestly.
We probably need to do a special permit.
That's what, well, our, and the ABC permit covers that portion.
I think it's, literally, I think it's, you see, it's got all of Main Street, the square footage of Main Street compared to the square footage of courthouse is about 89 times the amount, so.
I'm sorry, here's, sorry, we, we don't refer to it. Just, just so we're all on the same page, because we may have to address this so we're not violating our own city ordinance here. Sorry, is there an extra copy down there somewhere?
Do you need copies? Do you have a packet?
No, no, the ordinance, the ordinance.
The way most places, most municipalities handle this that I've dealt with is simple. Event variance, you know, just for the individual event and pick if it's in a historic district. And it's no problem.
Thanks, unless the place has a beer permit and license for on-premise consumption.
Is that what you already have?
Yes, that ABC permit that's included, it covers that.
Would it be for on-premise?
Yes.
Could we maybe persuade the county to do that? And although I'm saying it would, it would seem with weather and everything else, that would be such a lovely upstairs on the second floor.
We can't fit 300 people. I mean, 10 top tables, we cannot fit 300 people.
Unless we're doing play at the same time.
And I mean, unless they give their workout in and.
You're doing the play at the same time?
That's when we do our plays.
I don't think so.
That same week?
No.
No.
No, we had, it was a, I mean, I think you were there.
You're talking about the same night you were on that play or?
There was a downpour tsunami up there.
Wait a minute, hold on.
Yes, there was.
And we did good.
So, Mr. Bill is saying they have their play that same night?
We have a play going on, a little bit.
Okay, that could be a problem then. Because they've got to be able to.
No, we won't do it that weekend, no. If you're saying, I'm, I'm talking about it, it is in progress.
But you're, you're going to be practicing, you're going to be building sets.
Rehearsal.
We can't use the inside of courthouse, is what you're saying, right?
I've thought, I mean, I've thought about that in the past too, as far as like, because I, I love that quarter.
It just seems like a better location.
I think it's a beautiful thing, but there's just no space.
And if there's any way, because I'm hoping by next year, we'll have a few more businesses on our square. I just hate to block them off from Friday night all day Saturday if there are businesses that really need, need to get to.
We're, we're business on the square. It's great for our business. Restaurants, economic impact for this is huge.
And there was extensive discussion last year before the first ball about locations. And we had to ask them to look at other options and this was the best option.
We, we, it's kind of helps, it's a, it's a, it helps businesses, if, if anything.
Maybe if there's a way, we don't have to block off Third Street then, because I think that was some of the question. How could people get around to some of those restaurants and businesses like DT McCaws and some of those without totally going? We, we can talk with you about that, just maybe a plan, yes, sir.
Well, and I think my, my suggestion would be, and this application may be the best way to do it, but would be, to your point, to create, and it can be a very simple special event permit process in the ordinance that makes it clear that that's an exception to this provision. But also sets out criteria for what the town would want to receive if another event wanted to make an application for a similar type of thing. So that you know what you're getting for each event, you know, you get the same requirements. And then you can approve those, this one and others that might come.
These are very, very positive. Like I want to have more events, like I would like to have events almost every weekend on the square because these are extremely positive. And what it will do is it'll encourage more businesses to move in. But people want to have a nightlife. People want to walk around on sidewalks, people want to see what's going on. And this is one of those things that helps a lot of people.
Do we?
I do think in this process, and it sounds like it worked well, but I do think you do want to make sure that if you are closing a city street for any event, that you have safeguards in place and make sure it's done. And that there's insurance coverage provided and that the police understands where the traffic's going to flow and those sorts of things are addressed.
They've got all that.
And I know, yeah. Again, I've.
And they made Wilson Living.
So, that's coverage outside the county?
That's covered, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Y'all want to look at that deal?
Yeah, I, I've seen that.
Here you go. Maybe you can come and see.
So, we're going to have to get some, some change to our ordinance specifically, and we'll help us write that out.
And I can look at what some other cities have for special event. I mean, like Franklin does have them every.
Virtually ever seen. Can't see those now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
May I speak, interject something? We put on three events for the city, or in the city, Walton Days, Home Town Christmas and the Jeepers Creepers. We do that for the city of Carriage. And the intent of us doing this through the Chamber of Commerce was to bring people into downtown so that the businesses would have people walking through. The last Walton Days that we had was, I was told by the people that were on the street and the people that owned shops there, that it was probably the best day that they'd had all that year.
It was our best.
As far as business.
It was our best business day.
My fear is we're not Franklin, we're not Nashville, we're not Lebanon, we're not Coopville, we're not even Watertown. If you place an excessive burden on people to get permits and to do things, you're probably going to make it to where they can't do these functions. And that, we don't want that to happen in our town because it would be very hard for us to restart something that it's took us several years to get going. Walton Days was something that was started actually by Mayor Hodge called Heritage Festival. And it actually died and we revisited it and got it revamped. So, what I would say is that you have a baby here and please don't kill it. Because you, you don't want to see the town die again. And that's what I fear could happen if you put a lot of excessive burden and stipulations on this. As far as blocking of the streets, Mr. Sonny Carter with EMA comes in and handles that. His crew opens the street, closes the street. We have it set up, we work out with the chief of police, make sure that all of that is coordinated. And I don't know of anybody that would be better qualified to actually open and close the street. Sonny prefers to have Third Avenue closed because of traffic. That, that's his preference. I have actually been like the mayor and said, well, why do we need to close Third Street? And he wants to do that because of safety reasons. And so, I would urge you as a council to be careful how strenuous you make it for people to have events.
Well, I've only heard good things and I don't know of any complaints about the street being closed or.
I mean, I live around the middle of Soho's Col.
I've had, I've heard no complaints.
I mean.
Even the little church there that was having church that night.
Exactly.
They were, they were fine with it.
There's a church having.
You guys are going to have music, we're going to have music, you know, and they, they were.
We didn't bother each other at all.
Yeah, it was a.
Yeah, they were 100% supportive.
And I mean, a lot of the business owners were there, you know. So, some of them maybe closed down their businesses, but it was because they were coming.
It's, it's a win for everybody.
It's such a.
I mean, we have an amazing courthouse, amazing downtown, it's just.
And we're raising money for good causes and scholarships for kids in the community. It's great.
I'm just curious, do we know how much CASA will be able to be?
It was over $5,000. And we, we're doing 70% of our profits to the cause that we raised money for.
Okay, awesome.
That's because we kind of have to cover the distance between scholarships and that. So, we're going to be able to allot our scholarships. It's a $1,000 scholarship to a student of each, Fortsville and Smith County High.
So, the scholarship was in conjunction to the.
Additional, yeah.
Do you have to pay back so much for the next one?
Right.
That's kind of a little bit, yeah.
And we have, we have a minimum balance, yeah, we have a minimum balance that we are required to have in our account. And we have service fee, so we have to pay for that account as well, so.
I think Mr. Moore is, is, as he says, we, the only thing we will have to do is some sort of amendment to our ordinance about liquor on public property. And that can be a standard thing when we want to do these kind of things, I suppose, is what we're hearing.
Right, and my thought is basically to.
I don't know if anyone out there has any thoughts about this, but I'm sorry.
No, it is to take what you've submitted and create criteria around that, especially if there are no complaints. But I think the thing to keep in mind, and this sounds like a great event, but you have to follow the same standards for anybody that wants to have this type of event. So, you want to make sure that that's, that you have in place what you, what you need to have covered if you're going to do it, so.
Kind of the best case.
The only other question, I'm just curious, when we do the Walton Days, are, is there any fee paid to the chamber or the city to have those booths and things around?
We charge a $50 fee for a regular booth and a $70 fee for food booths. And then we charge a little extra if they want electrical connection to the panel that's there on the.
I guess, being the compusion with our public money, do we need any kind of basic charge for people to use our city streets or city property?
They're taxpayers, they pay for it all the time.
Well, and they're also benefiting, providing benefit to the businesses.
Yeah.
And that's what we want to have.
Which is more tax revenue right there. If you're getting a, if you're getting a record, if you're getting record sales from businesses, which I know several businesses had record sales on Walton Days, that's record tax revenue for cities. So, it's, they're, people pay for it.
It's a little different though from a night event where there's no sales. But I, I'm just asking because I don't know, I, again, we've got to be good stewards of our money, so.
Since, since you're talking monetary figures there, we hope to present to you so that the council will again support us with your budget contribution again this year. But the fee that we charge, that's, I, I have to use that to be able to put the event on. There are expenses that we have and then I actually have to get sponsors.
You're talking about Walton Days?
I'm talking about Walton Days. I have to get sponsors to help me with that. And what I've actually done the last couple of years, I've been able to pull in some higher level entertainment to bring it down to the street to try to draw people in, and we were able to do that. And so, that's what those funds go for. And actually, I'm kind of concerned this year, I'd like to keep the level of entertainment quality up. And I'm kind of concerned about being able to pay for those folks because the good guys are expensive. And so, that's what we use the fees.
But still, we're bringing people downtown, which is.
Oh, yeah.
That's.
That's been our goal with, with the whole Main Street committee, is to bring people downtown.
Do you have a date for it this year?
September 28th is Walton Days.
And that concert, that night was awesome.
Yeah, and we do.
That was, that was awesome.
What I call an after-party and I'd like to do that again. There's a group that does Journey, what's their band? Not Beach Boys, but anyway, they, they're a tribute band and they're really good.
So, your possibilities for you two, we can talk about, some possible, pretty good bands.
Okay, I would, I would love to, yeah, because we, we want to keep our entertainment level up as good as we can.
Okay. All right, so we'll work on, would it be an ordinance, what are we working on?
It would, it would be an ordinance to, a minimum, a minimum, excuse me, amend this provision to make it clear that there's an exception, but probably also to adopt a very simple special event permit application.
Well, do we need a motion for that or just let you do it and we'll come back next time?
Okay.
Bring something next month.
Hi, May, can we go ahead and our question is for planning purposes, that we can have this event again next year in the same location on that weekend and extend it into Sunday as far as blocking the streets? And if possible, I would love to work with Lex on trying to find a better way to anchor our tenants, but that can be done separately from that. But just for our planning purposes, so we can start advertising for next year's event, if we can get y'all's approval for that.
I'll make a motion that we permit the River City Ball to have the event on May 9th, 2020.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The next is, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The certificate of compliance for the, oh, yeah, I do, welcome. We had the public hearing earlier for the certificates of compliance for the Carthage wine and liquor. And now we're going to vote if you want to, I didn't rephrase this.
Yeah, again, this is just an application required by the Alcohol and Beverage Commission for make sure they're in compliance with the town's regulations to get their license. So, everything seems to be in order.
There's no change in the business, it's just a change in stockholder. Does that mean a new license or just, this is informational?
It's just informational, okay.
Motion approves the certificate of compliance.
Okay. Second one, okay. Any discussion, others? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, then our city recorder, Ms. Jennifer, has, they did a great job of interviewing folks. We had, what'd you say?
We had 54, like I told you all earlier. I'll pass this around, just out of respect of privacy, I don't really want to say names since we are streaming. But this is the most qualified candidate that we have. We really enjoyed meeting her. She's got tons of experience, we think she'd be a great asset to the city if you guys want to take a look at it. But this is our recommendation.
And I think part of what you were qualifying is someone who's had a lot of banking experience really is helpful.
A lot of cash handling experience, working with the public, with customers.
Customer service friendly?
Very friendly.
Okay.
Very friendly. References, you check for it, yes.
That was from our water training that we're talking about.
Oh.
Good customer service quality.
Yeah.
Found one text from someone requesting... One text from someone requesting... Wait, 54?
54. We interviewed 54.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it was. We had some really great people apply, it was tough to pick and pick.
Is there anything in particular that made this person stand out?
Mainly her banking experience and customer service experience. And her personality, yeah. I think she'd be, yeah, she was really easy to talk to, I think she would be great in that, because you're the face of the city when you walk in, so you need to have a great personality. I think she would do awesome.
Is she related to anyone else that worked for the city?
Not that I'm aware of.
No conflict of interest with anybody then?
Not that I'm aware of.
She's out of town.
Pardon?
Out of town.
Yes.
Same place for 12 years?
So that's our recommendation, if you guys would have her.
Motion to...
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Start the... She has to give a two-week notice, so she will start that following Monday, after two weeks. We'll start her training.
Don't we need to say who it is, since we voted now?
I mean, it is public records, so it's not like it's confidential information, whether you want to broadcast it or not, I don't know that that's required, but it's...
That was kind of our thoughts too. Thank you.
Okay, great. Still in the hiring mode, Mr. Steve, we would like to make a motion that we make a hiring announcement or a public announcement to hire an additional person at the water plant, sewer plant, excuse me.
We're going, we're going, we get the permission from the council to advertise, we're going to advertise for chief land operator to start with, and simply we can find anybody that's already got a state of Tennessee grade three, we can operate with a license. So that's the way we'll initially advertise it, and simply get anybody, if not, we'll have to come back and go to entry level.
And if we can find someone who's qualified already, we don't have to go through the whole process of training.
That would be great, yeah.
Okay.
A motion, whipper.
A motion that we'll put out a hiring...
Put out a hiring, yeah.
We will post hiring for this position, yes, okay. Can I hear a second to that, please? Any further discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we oppose that, thank you, Steve. And for Ms. Teresa, for the water plant.
Yes, ma'am, we've discussed a part-time hiring of somebody at the water plant, just to start training him. I've worked on 30 years, turned 60, yes, I just told my age. So I think it's time to get somebody in and start training.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to...
Motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
So we will, the motion is to announce the hiring of part-time for the water plant, any discussion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? All right, thank you, Teresa may do that, thank you. All right, we're coming up to... Oh, okay, this... We had the, oh yes, okay, I'm sorry, we had the first reading of this ordinance to rezone Main Street last time, and now this is... What we're doing is that special call meeting on the 18th, we're asking to table it till then, because we also have to have a public hearing for this, we just found out. So on the 18th, just so you'll know, we'll have a little bit more than we planned, there's going to be a public hearing for the ordinance, this one, then the public hearing for the budget, hopefully that will pass the first reading tonight, and then a public hearing, if we pass tonight, on the local option sales tax ordinance. That would be, then the second reading of all of those, yes, sir.
Has this been advertised for a public hearing on the 18th yet?
We are going to do that.
Okay, it needs to be 15 days prior, so we may want to do it for the July meeting.
Well, we think it may be 10, I'm sorry, is it 15?
The rezoning, I believe it's 15.
Okay.
If it's 10, then we're good, if it's 15, then we're not.
The budget's 15, right?
When would the...
We'll get it up this afternoon.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, when would the notice fee go out?
We'll take his word.
I think we just come under the wire if it's 10, but let's be sure about this before, okay? We kind of finagled around this, trying to get the right thing.
I'm sure Gary tried, but before the meeting is over, I'll have looked at the statute.
If we are right about then, that we have three public hearings about the rezoning, we'll have one for the budget ordinance, one for the local sales tax law ordinance, and then we'll have the three readings, second readings of Main Street, budget, local sales tax. And then we'll have a first reading on the budget amendment, which we just found out we have to do unamended budget, not before we do this budget, but we have to have it by sometime in July, probably, just in the state, so.
This is item 7, 12, and 13, were those poning till we get a public hearing correction?
I'm sorry.
No, 12 and 13 are the first reading.
Those are first readings.
This is because this is the second reading.
Gotcha, okay.
We have to do the special call meeting ahead like we've done.
But we're going to do it at the same time that was... That's what I was making sure I was tracking with y'all.
One, well, sweep or whatever. So while Mr. Moore's looking, could we go on to talk about the traffic light? Is that you, Mr. Evil?
So that, I was just wanting to follow up, because we voted on doing the, paying for that traffic light, it got knocked over, and I always want to make sure our insurance paid for...
We got two different things we're talking about.
Oh, I guess, is that two different things?
Okay. No, our insurance doesn't, I've already checked.
Insurance did not pay for it?
It will not pay for it, it's not covered under our policy, I called him to talk about it, unfortunately.
And we didn't know who knocked it down?
No.
Okay.
Apparently not, and he kept going.
My part is, basically, the light needs to be fixed. I mean, I mean, what do we pay tax dollars for then? I mean, what am I paying all the sales tax for and property tax if I can't have a working red light? And it needs to be done.
How did it get damaged again?
Apparently, truck, is that what they told us?
Has it been submitted to insurance?
It was like a mobile home going down, and it pulled it down.
No, I meant the town's insurance.
For the traffic light? I called him. You'd think it would, I'll call him again. What Mr. Moore suggested, Bruce, we'll submit a claim, they've already told us that we can't do it.
Right, I mean, it may not, there may be an exception for it, but again, I would submit it.
The question that's on the agenda is, why is it taking so long to get fixed?
It's $20,000. We have, we would have to vote for that.
Is it, have you heard, and again, I don't, I don't use that, so you heard a lot on that one.
Every day.
Yes, a lot of places.
You try and turn there, and it's, it's a...
So it's a safety issue.
It really is, I mean, there's some times that you're pulling out and you got somebody coming both ways, and you're just like, let's hope I make it, you know? Let's hope it don't stall in the middle of it, so.
We don't need somebody to get hurt.
If we don't have the $20,000, the other option would be to take it down, is that true?
No, we're going to fix it.
We need to fix it, that's what a little... That seems outrageous.
That is, to turn on a light?
Well, it's like a truck box.
Just turning it off, they got to rebuild that whole box.
The box is bad, it's not just the light.
Did we not have anything from the Jefferson Avenue? Was that one just... Oh, it's already been used, okay.
Les, was that, was that weight triggered, or the mechan, or the, was it just a set light?
Set light, it's a timer.
It was a pressure light, okay, so it was a pressure light, yeah, my recommendation was if we do change, you keep it as a pressure light. I got another agenda coming, item coming up based on pressure lights, but being that people, you know, if somebody shows up, yeah, let it change, if not, just let that traffic keep flowing, you know?
Mr. Jacob, were you getting ready to say something? No, okay, I thought you were...
I just think we need to get some bids or whatever, I don't really care, I just want to see it fixed, everybody wants to see it fixed. So.
So let's motion to get some bids and get it fixed. So yeah, motion to get some bids, see how much it costs to fix.
At the same time, let's file an insurance claim, even though they say they won't do it. Say it won't have to do it.
I don't think we need a motion for that. So there's a motion on table?
Okay, second.
Jack, one second.
Okay, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Just put fix, call, Jack.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to get bids for fixing the light, the box, whatever has to be fixed. And second to that, any discussion?
The only discussion I'd like to say is we need to set a timeline to get it done, a deadline to get it done, and then we need to, we shouldn't drag it out a longer time.
Before the school year, okay?
We should have bids by July.
By July, make a vote, we can vote to get it fixed in July, have it be done by the end of July.
Put it on schedule, how long it takes them to get out, right?
Are you all, are you all okay with the pressure light?
That's the best way to do it for that one, because there's not a whole lot of traffic that comes up in the street.
But when it does, turn it off, okay. And again, I'm just, I'm kind of deferring to y'all, because I don't, I don't travel that way too much, so if they're getting a lot of complaints, you know, let's go ahead and fix it.
It's more travel than you would think, a lot of them are call structures and all. Prior to the bypass being completed, it was the second most traveled road in town.
Okay.
I'm sure it hasn't fallen too far off of that.
Okay, so we're going to file the insurance for the light, that's just, nothing, let's do that, so we have a motion.
You have a motion, second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, so we will, we will get bids for fixing the light.
We do need 15 days' notice on the zoning.
Okay.
I was thinking about budgets.
Okay, okay, so...
So we can do it for July on a meeting.
Okay, well, what to do July for the rezoning?
What about?
There's a different timeframe for budgets, and noticing public hearings for budgets. It's 10 days for the budget.
Okay.
Public hearing.
So we're going back to...
Rezoning is 15.
So for the rezoning, we are going to go to our July meeting.
Table it to the July meeting for the first, second reading of that.
So we do not have a meeting on the 18th?
No, no, we do, no, no, we do, this is, we're just moving the whole thing into public hearing two, we'll have to move that.
Yes, because you have to do a public hearing.
So that will be on the regular July meeting, which you've changed now to what, the 17th?
The 11th.
11th, 11th, okay.
First submit June 18th.
Right, okay, so is everybody on board with that? We still have the June 18th meeting, special call meeting, where we'll have the second reading of the ordinance and the sales tax option, if we get it passed tonight, and then public hearings for each of those. And a reading of, we'll send it out to you, but we'll have several posts on that ticket tonight, okay. Reconciling city books, Mr. Evil, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be clarification, and we discussed this in email and in person today, and the system we're using is called...
Assist.
Assist, so well, the state, and we discussed this, the state, we have reconciled with the state, but the numbers we are operating off upon this budget come from assist, which still have, those have not been reconciled for three years. And so I was, I wanted to take Chief Davis's advice and, you know, check several years, not just compare last year's to this year's when we're looking at the budget, and so I know that you were going to get me a line item by line, basically, it'll read down the, down the funding, it'll say, you know, 15, 16, 17, and it'll be a comparison on all three of those, which is basically projected revenue, actual revenue, and then budgeting, and that will give us something basically to work off. I know three of us, we're new, so that'll help us make our decisions on budgeting, and I know you'll probably just send it out to everybody. But I was just going to say, because these are not reconciled, meaning these are not true numbers that necessarily went in the bank, we should definitely proceed with caution on how we budget, because we don't know right now. And that's not to point any fingers or blame, she's got a ton on her plate, she's brand new to the position, she's cleaning up a lot of stuff. Obviously, I think, you know, we can give you a lot of grace on it, but even on that, we still need to be cautious on this budget, because they are not reconciled numbers, so I just wanted to...
Do you want to say something, please do.
So I have a couple of things. One, you had posted some information on Facebook about numbers, and I talked to you about it earlier. I'm not following where you're getting that we're overspending by $1.3 million.
So what I did, I brought that one, me too. Where'd I put my budget at, I'm sorry. Let me find my budget here, where I wouldn't highlight it better, thank you. So basically, I went and I just added up everything in here, where we had our proposed 2019 budget, and I took everything down, and again, we're only working through as far as our past budget to now. But I took all those numbers and I put them down, and I went up to, I got basically $3,906,000 of a proposed budget altogether. Now, round, give or take, a little bit, because I was just writing back. And then I went down on all of your numbers on the projected revenue, and that added up to $1,885,000. So that was the, that's the numbers I got, and that was based on what we all discussed here at that budget meeting.
Are you combining water sewer and general, the expenditures?
I'm combining this entire list.
That's two different funds, you cannot include both of those together.
Okay.
Now, the revenues, the 1.8 is correct. That's, yeah, you went through the sheet correctly, that's fine, but you cannot tell citizens that we're spending that much money when it's not the same.
Okay, well, that would, that needs to be made clear then, as far as, if it's a separate line item and we're putting it in this sheet, we need to put it in a separate sheet then, that says...
It is a separate sheet.
Okay.
There's several sheets in there.
There's two different funds you're talking about, there's the water sewer and then there's the general, so they're totally separate.
So I never, I never use the language in general fund, I use the language of every expenditure that we have.
Right, but you have made it, you've made it seem... You only use one budget.
But we didn't include the revenue from the water sewer in with that.
And if you, if you will look on your, your budget that I gave you. So at the very top, it says general fund on several pages, all the way through page 10. And then you go to page 11, and that's water sewer fund.
Gotcha, okay, so general fund, right here.
And you never combined the two?
No.
Never.
So we're not going to combine it?
This top sheet that I gave you, I gave you two sheets, one that's general, one that's water sewer. These are based directly off of everything in those budgets.
So everything on water sewer, we don't pull from general fund on any water sewer?
No.
It is all moving backward, so needs to be separate. Okay, awesome, very cool.
I just wanted to make it clear, because it makes it seem like we're not doing our due diligence with our departments, and you blasted it, for everybody to see that you think we're overspending by $1.3 million.
And that's how I felt.
And that's grossly wrong.
Okay, well...
But may I say, when you have a question about that, please call to Jennifer, she's very good about explaining these things, so just, just come to her. Clear separation between water sewer and the general, source of revenue for each is totally different also, just come to her if you've got a question.
Absolutely, this is, this is the first time that's been explained to me, yeah.
But what I need to say is that, because it goes out there, people do not know that that's probably, or could be incorrect, so you put Jennifer in that.
I'll be happy to correct myself, but when I get information, I share it, and I made that clear when I ran for this office. As soon as I get information, I'm going to share it, sometimes incomplete information, I'm going to... Listen, I'll, I'll be happy to correct myself, but when I get information, I share it, and I, I, I made that clear when I ran with his office, as soon as I get information, I'm gonna share it, sometimes incomplete information, I'm gonna get incomplete information.
I don't know how much clearer you can get, there's two sheets that's broken down exactly how it's.
Okay.
Incorrect information be very damaging.
Listen, and I, I, right now, I raise my hand, and I will take responsibility for it, because this is my, my thing, but I was, I, I'm gonna, I'll do my best, I made a mistake on it, that's fine, I admit to my mistake, I'll correct my mistake, but, um, I wasn't, I didn't do that anything, then, that's exactly what I saw. That's my, that was my, that was my assessment, that I'm sitting here saying, well, we've got this much and we're going this much, that's ridiculous, and so.
Yeah, you made that very clear in that.
My quest, if you don't mind, is when you have questions, you go to the source that gave you that information and you ask the questions.
I used to do that, and I would, got, you know.
No.
Okay.
Happy to do it.
Regardless, I have another comment on this, I have another comment on this post, so.
I was told not to do that.
You also posted that we received an eight hundred fifty thousand more than expected from sales tax revenue.
Yes.
Meaning that you feel that we are overtaxed, so you specifically said that it was sales tax, which is incorrect. The money that makes up that eight hundred fifty thousand also includes, uh, building permits, cemetery deeds.
I don't think I specifically said.
I'm looking at it right here, it says sales tax, I printed it off. I just want to say.
Honestly, I'm like, I, I mean, I'm talking between like friends on Facebook.
Right, but do you know how many people see that?
Thousands of people.
Okay.
I just, you're, you're very.
I said, please. Anyway, all that means said, okay, I apologize if I said sales, I will make that correction too, I did not mean to say sales tax, I said, that's that number right here, where's that page at? That's that number right over here.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
All right, so.
But like I said, if you, if you look down in those line items.
Taxes, taxes, we, we received that much more in tax revenue, correct, than was projected?
It is, but it's not sales tax, and I think your argument is, you don't, it, it goes back to the whole local option, you don't feel we should do the whole local option again?
We have eight hundred fifty thousand more dollars in, in revenue.
But that doesn't have to do with local options.
Okay.
So, I just, you're very big on transparency, and so, I wanna hold you accountable for that.
Absolutely.
And, and I want you to hold me accountable for it if I'm wrong. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, that's not, this is not.
And I'll apologize, if I put sales tax in there, I apologize, that was not my intent on that, it was tax in general, and so, I will, I will make those corrections and I will blast it around Facebook.
I would appreciate it. The other thing, um, you had come in, you were talking about, um, me getting you new reports.
Yes.
You wanted them in a different format, so they were all together, so you could.
Yeah, if you can put them in Excel, cause I can, I can work this so.
Okay, and I don't mind doing that at all, I just kinda want a little clarification from you guys, what y'all want me to do as far as budgets, because, um, Councilman Evil told me that he wants me to get all this together, so he can create a new budget. Go to all the supervisors and talk about where they can cut on their budgets.
But you guys have already done that, right?
I explained that we've had several meetings with our supervisors.
Yes.
We've already slashed every single meeting that we've had, they've cut something, then we had a budget workshop, that he said that he wasn't involved with the supervisors, and then he said, um, we only spent two hours at the budget workshop, and there's no way to go through it, so. I just need to know, I'm not gonna spend hours and hours working on a budget if y'all are just gonna make a new one, so I just need to know what y'all wanna do.
We don't have time to start from scratch.
Okay, here's what I'm saying again. I'm asked to make a, a budget, I'm asked to vote on a budget where I've had two hours of look over, a lot of details, and now, again, this is my, I'm new to government on this side of the table on this, but in my businesses and everyone else, it's, it takes quite a few more, quite a few more hours than just a couple hours to go over a big budget like this. I didn't get, we got to talk about generalization, and I'm not asking everybody here to do it, but I, 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 I'm saying for my purposes, I don't mind going, going through and looking at everything, but I wanna look, I wanna look at everything, if, what, I don't understand why there's an objection, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do any more work, but I wanna look through everything, I wanna talk to everybody, and I was encouraged by several people to talk to all the department heads and go through everything, and I need to have all those numbers, but when I'm sitting, when I'm giving these numbers at one workshop and deciding to make this huge decision in two hours.
Well, that workshop was what, a week ago maybe?
Yeah.
You had a week to look at, didn't you?
Well, I, I got those numbers from you and, uh, a couple days ago, and I just looked at it today, and I asked her if I could get it in Excel format, and the reason is, and I'm not asking y'all to do anything different, if you wanna do something different, that's fine, this is, I wanna look at this, because I have to explain why I'm either gonna vote for tax increase or decrease, and I can't give a conscious decision and a conscious vote to my constituents if I can say, well, let, here, read it later, go pass the budget, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look through all the details, and that's just, that's just what I'm gonna do.
May I add to this, just in deference to our supervisors, once again, they have worked extensively over the last month, cutting through, looking at their, and these are the people, again, who are the experts, they know what they need, they know how deep they can cut, and believe me, they've cut as deep as I believe they, they can possibly do it and still keep functioning. I think part of this process is we just have to trust the people who've been hired and been working here for twenty years to know what kind of budgets they need.
But that's not the process, my process is not to work for the city, my process is to work for the voter. And when the voter is sitting here, okay, when the voters are sitting here looking at these huge property tax increases that are coming down the line from the county, and where I can sit here and, I can't make a decision, I, I'm not doubting their integrity, I'm sitting here seeing different numbers on there.
But you're mixing the county with the city.
Exactly.
That's not, that's not our doing.
Do we pay county, okay, do we pay county taxes, do we pay city taxes?
Why don't you go to the city measures and complain about the, the tax increase?
But what I'm saying, well, everyone's coming up for tax increases, and so if I can cut, if I can find ways to cut the tax, taxes for other areas, that's fine, but I'm, I'm gonna look, I'm not asking y'all to do, y'all can do what you want, I wanna look at some details.
But we're not cutting taxes with this budget, they're telling us what they need to operate, and then throughout the year, we'll have the option to vote on whether we want them to spend money on specific projects or not.
But is it, is it, is it offending anyone that I wanna go through and look through twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
That's a problem with.
See how?
Look through that, but don't question our budget.
Now, my, my issue is not that you're wanting to look for it.
So I can't question the government?
You're asking.
No, no, if you'll listen to me for a second, my issue is not that you wanna see it, I'll give you any report you want, as long as I can figure out how to get it to you.
My issue is, I have spent a lot of time on this budget, I have spent a lot of time during the day when I could have been working on other stuff, these supervisors have taken their time out of their day, and I've spent a lot of time away from my family, just to work on this, and then you come in and say that you wanna do your own budget, if that's the case, you don't need me to do the budget. If you wanna do your budget, that's fine.
I'm one vote out of six, okay?
I'm just saying, if that's what you want, that's fine, I don't have to do it, somebody else.
You know you've been doing her job then.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm her job, but.
All right.
That's my issue, so if you guys do.
Okay, so, again, I'm gonna question everybody here, I'm sorry, that's what I got elected to do, I did not get elected to go just goose step with everything that's given, and that's not saying that I questioning what's going on, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at things, and I, I apologize, yeah, and so, and I'm not, I'm not saying this, I, I just need that format, and I can work on Excel, and, and, and what, what happened was.
But to say that you wanna go to the department heads in the middle of their, their workday and go over each budget and see what you can cut, and that's what's part of it.
So I can't go talk to the department heads, okay?
They've, they've already done that process, Mr. Evil.
And I wasn't invited any of it, but I'm supposed to vote on a budget.
The, the workshops, you could have come to any of these workshops you wanted to.
You were standing down on the street when we had the workshop.
Yeah.
I passed you coming down here.
How long did it take you to change formats, cause that sounds extensive to me.
Uh, I'll show you how to change an Excel format, just export to, uh, it's a certain file, that's all it is.
Have you used our computer system before?
I know, I use NetSuite and QuickBooks.
Yeah, that's not what we use.
Okay. I mean, it's a counting program.
Jennifer's point, our city recorder's point, is that you wanna create a separate budget.
Your own budget.
From what we're already worked on for over a month now, and all of our supervisors have worked on, you wanna revisit them to say, for them to say to you again, this is all we can cut.
And you want me to trust, uh, uh, numbers that have not been reconciled for three years?
That's, no, that's not what, that's not what this is, that's not what this is, no, no, no. No.
They, have they, has that system been reconciled for three years, yes or no?
You're talking about bank statements, that's a difference.
The, the system has not been reconciled to be bank statements.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the numbers we're working off of, correct?
It is.
Okay.
I've had, we had a, um, accountant come in that helped me.
CPA.
That helped me work on budget numbers, and he feels it's close, it's not to the penny, but he feels it's close to, to what the system numbers are. Um, I will be working, once this budget gets passed, I'll be working to get it reconciled past three years, you just gotta give me time.
That's.
So you've printed out the reports that he asked for, they're just not in the format we would like them to make.
I sent it to all you guys.
I don't think she's questioning, like, you'll get me those, it's not a big deal for you to get me that.
No.
It's, she's questioning that I might propose something that she's been working hard on, and I might not, I, I am just learning, I'm learning on yours.
Well, I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said you're only one vote out of six, and, and you've got a budget before you tonight, so I mean, I, I think what would be appropriate is to have this discussion when this is on the table.
I think so.
And you may have already had it, but, and obviously, you can do whatever research you need to do between readings, and you don't have to vote for it tonight on first reading, but as far as Jennifer's concerned, she's got the budget to move forward with and, and any.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to move forward, move forward the budget, I just wanna do my own research, I'm not asking anyone else to do any research that they don't wanna do.
We're allowed to do all the research we want to.
Yeah.
But we've tied up about fifteen minutes, just so you.
And I didn't bring it up.
Well.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on then to the next items, if you don't mind, uh, I guess, two thousand fifteen, same thing, can we move on to the funding for the fire hose, is that something where you?
Yes, um, funding for fire hoses, I just wanna make sure that was addressed.
It was.
Um, the, um, is, is that in this upcoming budget?
I put it in your.
To be able to cover for it, okay.
What'd we give him, ten?
Ten.
Ten?
And that's, that's, uh, and that's gonna include a chick, that's what I think.
And that's for one engine?
Just for one engine, okay.
Those, um, convert, those conversions, if you had something where you had converting on the truck, is that including in there too? Okay, okay.
Um, okay, we're gonna move on to, um, first reading of our budget ordinance, and everyone has this in your packet, I didn't know if you gave you all budget, uh, it's B, we have a new system of, of numbering these, it's the, the year two thousand nineteen oh six oh six, which is tonight, oh, and this, this is the first reading, once it's passed, it will go to number one, so.
Thank you.
So I've put together, uh, I printed you guys a new budget, uh, with all the changes that we made the other night. You have a question about?
Oh, yeah, um, the engineering second opinion? What's, what's that about?
Well. In the past, there have been some things that have, we're actually now paying for, uh, one of those being a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment at the water plant that we discovered that was, Ms. Teresa very vocally said, we do not need this here, uh, what I'm told, and Ms. Teresa even said this better than I did, is that she was overruled by the former mayor and said, you're gonna put it there, I don't know, uh, it's, it's not something, it's actually designed, what I'm told, for a sewer plant. So we're paying on a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, whereas if we might have had a second opinion about some of these before we went forward with it from another mayor, which is done all the time, and is a liable and ethical thing to do, we might have saved five hundred thousand dollars on that piece of equipment. Some of the fees that we've been charged, if you see the fee scale that I sent you and double check, uh, I do have some questions about the fees that we've been charging, if we had a second, and it doesn't mean we're gonna use it, but I'd just like to have a little money in there if we needed to do a second opinion.
I just feel like it's a slap in the face to the people that we hire, I mean, it's like we trust Les, and we trust Teresa, and we trust everybody, and then we're like, you know what, I don't trust you, so I'm gonna, and like, for my business, if I had somebody come in and someone, and, and my, um, my client hired somebody to second guess me, I would be hitting the road, because they don't trust me, so why do I even wanna try and do business with them?
Well, but on the same hand.
One of my clients goes to another attorney, I'm done.
I mean, I, it's just not even worth it, and I just, I mean, you know, it's, it's just a, I just think it's just a, it's a slap in the face, and, and it's just, it's, we've, we've appointed Jerry to do his job, and, and I'm not an engineer, none of us here, sitting here, are engineers.
That's why.
So.
We can compare prices without second opinions, paying for second opinions, can't we?
I don't, I mean, it's a varies.
If you wanted to compare prices.
Well, it's not a, it's, it's not a widget A and a widget B kinda thing that you can go.
Would you like to address this, Mr. Evil?
Well, I mean, if, if you're talking about a, a engineering contract, a professional services contract, whenever that is awarded, you, you can look at the fees, but you don't award that contract based on the amount of fees, it's, it's not a type of contract that's bid out. But I, I know we're talking about, you're talking about mayor contracts that were, have previously been awarded, but moving forward, you know, you look at each individual contract, you, you hire the engineer or consultant that you feel is best suited for that particular contract, unless you've got, which I don't think the town has, just an overriding engineering contract for all engineering services, but, anyway, I just wanted to address the, the question that that, that's not something that's bid out.
We're sitting on a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that's not being used.
Well, I'm gonna defer everything to Jerry, but, I mean, I'm not gonna try and speak for him.
I think the question is there, if I may speak to that, there's a piece of equipment at the water plant that was designed to take the grit out of the clarifiers, that's working, now, Teresa and I have talked about that, there have been some issues with that, as far as there was concern that, that it was not working properly, and what I had asked personnel at the water plant was the next time, when they got ready to operate it, to clean it out, to contact me, my staff, and we would talk to the supplier of that equipment. I've since talked to that supplier, we are more than happy to come up, sit down, go through that process with the folks at the water plant, if there's an issue with the operation, or there's an issue with how that works, we would be the first to try to help address that and try to figure it out. That's where we normally try to work that out. We believe that equipment is suitable for that use, obviously, probably would not have put it in that particular place, sometimes there are issues with how things are operated, I can't address that, because I don't operate the equipment on a day-to-day basis, but we would respectfully ask for the opportunity that we could get the manufacturer's representative here, we could check the conditions at the plant, and if there's an issue there, let us look to see what it would take to get that addressed, I think that's a fair response, and if there's a concern, we'll try to see what it takes to take care of that.
My concern, and I appreciate your explanation, is that this has been raised by several people, not just Ms. Teresa.
I didn't even raise the concern, I, it was coming to me, and I just told you how it was, but, uh, the manufacturer tells me it was designed for the wastewater plant.
Well, and that's, I've just thrown this out to a couple of engineer friends of mine, you have no dog in the fight or whatever, and they say, no, that's, that a grit chamber is designed for sewer plant, that's where it should have been placed, and I'm not sure, Steve, do you have any?
Well, yeah, that's usually, most wastewater plants have grit chambers, we don't, because we're old plant, and it's not designed really with enough room to put one in, but if we build a new plant, I would say we would have a grit chamber to put in.
Well, but this, this one thousand dollars has nothing to do, I mean, all that's in the past, and, and I think we do, didn't we have a resolution or a contract for Jerry, Jacqueline, do you remember that?
We don't have one.
Do you remember? Seems like right when we first, at least when I first came on, and maybe you were two years after, but it seems like, do you remember Barbara?
Well, we've gone through the contrary, it's just for grant, is all it is.
Yeah, maybe, I, I.
Okay, I was not sure, but.
Uh, what's, I mean, what's the solution here, we're sitting on a half million dollar piece of equipment that's not being used, and.
Jerry, just tell us what the solution is.
You're saying just basically, we should go ahead and get this.
We're using it, we're just don't get any results out of it.
Well, I guess my question would be, if it's actually designed for a sewer plant, what was the thought process that went into putting it at the water plant, I don't, that's what I'm trying to, oh, I don't understand.
To address that comment, it is designed to remove grit, the issue at the water plant was the grit from the clarifiers, that's what the intent of that piece of equipment was for, now, in earlier.
I'm sure you, you were gonna put it at the sewer plant, is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
The issue, there's a twofold issue here, the concern was grit was getting to the wastewater plant, this goes back to engineering reports that were done by previous engineers, going back to nineteen ninety-one, part of their concerns was that the grit from the water plant was being sent to the wastewater plant, which thereby was creating a worse situation at the wastewater plant. We verified that in two thousand twelve, when we put in new diffusers at the wastewater plant, because when we took the clarifier there down to clean it out, to put diffusers in, I don't have photographs with me, but I have them, and I think some of that grit was probably in the neighborhood of. And I think some of that grit was probably in the neighborhood of like ten feet deep. That had been collecting over years. So the comment in one earlier engineering report was to remove the grits before it got to the wastewater plant. We looked at that, the idea was to take it out of the clarifiers at the water plant, hence the use of this particular piece of equipment. I go back to my earlier statement. If there is a concern, and apparently there is, and I've talked to Teresa about this, and we said that we would be glad to come up and review that equipment. I've talked to the manufacturer's representative as early, latest today. He's more than willing to come up. We will look at it. If there's an issue there, we'll try to see if it can be addressed. It may be, and sometimes what we see is it's a simple application. Perhaps it may be that there's not enough flow. The equipment is designed to operate at a certain velocity of water. If the water is not running correctly, there may not be adequate velocity. There's a pump that's in the bottom of the grit collector. Everything has to be turned on and operated in a certain fashion. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and tell y'all that I know how to operate all those pieces of that pump. But that's how we deal with the manufacturer's representatives. We get them out, we check it, we go over with the plant operators, and we try to figure out what works best for this particular situation. That's all we would ask, is the opportunity to get them here. And if there's an issue here, let us try to address it.
Let, let me ask you two questions. Is this something that would, if we could move it to the sewer plant, would be better served there? If we could actually move it there?
Buried, isn't it?
All right. Then my second question would be, if they come out, it's, it's fine, and check it. And if Ms. Teresa feels that we're, we're not getting what we should be getting out of it, what do we do then?
That's a question that would have to be addressed at that time. Because when this equipment was put in and when it was designed, that was approved, and this was the particular piece of equipment that was selected and put in. We discussed that at council table.
Was it approved by the supervisor?
It was approved by everybody because it was approved at the council.
Did the supervisor approve it at the time?
At that time, I don't know if the.
It was, it was a, I wasn't really on, you know, that decision. I kinda spoke against the project from the beginning. And I agree, there's a lot, a grit problem at the wastewater plant, but it's not coming from me, it's coming from everywhere. We don't have that much grit. This, this, this piece of equipment has been used for a year and a half now, and we have a barrel down there that might have this much grit in it. So if, if it, if it isn't working correctly, or is, we do need to have the manufacturers to.
And I would suggest we get, get him to give us a statement of what it's designed to do and what it's designed to do.
Yeah.
Well, the manufacturer told us that they were designed for wastewater plants. I'm not the manufacturer, I'm not the expert.
Teresa, would you be objective, just to make sure we cover all of our bases, to them coming out and checking everything?
No, I'm not objective to that at all.
Okay. That way we cover all our bases and then we can, we can make a clear decision on what we need to do, if it's, if it's a doing, what it's supposed to be doing down there or not. Cause I just, I feel like we got incomplete, we got kind of incomplete information from what the manufacturer's telling you, what Jerry's telling us. And that way we can kinda consolidate that information.
I have no problem with Jerry or the manufacturer or all of you above. Because I'm not getting any results out of it.
You're just not getting any results out of it? Okay.
Okay, so back to the question, which was about the second opinion.
Yeah, do we want to leave it in or take it out?
Where are we, I guess I'm sorry.
Um.
Are we talking about the budget?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
There's a line item that ends in two five zero.
For the engineering second opinion.
Engineering second opinion.
Uh, two five zero?
Mm-hmm.
What page are we on?
The first page.
First page, okay.
And I numbered them for you on this one.
I was on the first page.
You're welcome.
You did? We do listen, every now and then.
I do listen.
Ends in two five zero.
Two five zero, uh-huh. It's the first page.
Oh, right here. There we go. Okay. Right here. Engineering second opinion, thousand dollars.
It's a short paper, no.
That's why I, I was on the first page. I was like, I don't have numbers on this, see?
Yeah. You had requested to put in a thousand dollars on each one item.
Whatever y'all want to do about it, I just thought it would be a safe.
Cause this is gonna be like a, I mean, if we have new contracts, we're gonna take bids on it anyway, right? Am I right about that? And there's no point in going like, going backwards, I mean, what?
Is it hard to get a second opinion of that?
Well, but, I mean, if we're getting a second opinion on something that's already been done, if it's already in the ground or built or whatever, like, it's, it makes no difference at that point.
It's kinda like this question we just had, it took another ten, fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Something's already done and we can't undo it.
I mean.
Okay, well, whatever y'all want to do.
I just don't see the point of, of.
I mean, it's there, is there, there's nothing we can do that it's already there.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean.
So there's line item, do we want to keep it in?
Well, that's, it's not for this. Uh, this, this would be for future projects if we just wanna get a second opinion.
But we're gonna bid it out anyway, though.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just talking about future, okay, cause, I mean, I, I, I agree, but something's already been, something's already been done. There's not, there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, this kinda, we just lost money, you know, it's, yeah.
Anyway, are we gonna take it out?
You guys want the thousand dollars in there for that line item or not? That's all I need.
Maddest thing, he doesn't want it in. It doesn't matter, whatever y'all want to do.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, then I'll make a motion, we remove it from the budget.
All right, second any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're taking it out. There you go.
Okay, so taking that one out, all right. So everything else pretty much stayed the same. I just made the changes that you guys requested. Um, the contributions page, which is page five. Just to let y'all know, I kept the bus driver out, cause that's what you guys voted on last time, and then you, you voted against it, it's not too, so.
I do have a question about this, cause I, according to the courier, we don't know if some of these are gonna be funded by the county next time. There's rumors that the senior center might be closed. Does anyone know anything more about that? If we find out there is not, no longer one of these items, I guess we just won't fund it.
I don't think we'd be held accountable to pay something to some of this.
That has actually happened before, and they obviously did not submit a letter to receive the donation, so.
So we'll just leave this and if they don't exist, we don't pay?
All right, so keep all that the same thing. Um, the police, you guys had requested for me to add the dictaphone back in there.
Mm-hmm. Which page is that one?
The police is page six. So the dictaphone was six thousand. So that went under office machinery and equipment, so that brought it up to eight. So I was just letting you guys know that that total changed. Um, the fire department, you guys have requested to up the repair line item. That is page seven. Uh, to up the repair line item to thirty thousand. So I did that and then made a new line item for the fire hoses. And I talked with Joe last night, we put ten thousand, that's for one truck. Um, so that increased their budget. Um, the street department, which is page eight. You guys requested for me to add the street repair money back in there, uh, a hundred and forty thousand. So that increased that, uh, total. And if you go to page, go to page eleven, that's the water department. Paul, you had asked that I decrease the salaries, which was fine, that, that should be okay. We decreased that to one.
That was a twenty K, right?
Page eleven, mm-hmm, it's twenty thousand.
And that was.
And I did the figures, that was, that's good, so we took.
Wait, wait, who were we decreasing salaries on?
It was over budgeted.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, it was fine.
It was just a general over budgeting.
Yeah, it was fine. Um, so that decreased theirs. Sewer hadn't, we didn't do any changes on it. And then, uh, the very last page, which is page thirteen, the water sewer department, when we first went over it in the budget workshop, uh, uniforms was left off there. And, um, so I have a debt taken there. So that increased their budget. But all of those numbers are reflected on that very top sheet that's got broken, that's, uh, broken down with general fund and water sewer fund. So it's got all your totals and where we're at with our budget.
Okay, so given this, we know we've gone into reserves lately.
Right, right. Water sewer is good, um, it's a difference of three hundred sixty-four thousand. The general fund, we will have to dip into our reserves by about two hundred eighty-eight thousand. That was adding in all the, that has to do with the, the loss of the, of the tax revenue and, um, adding in different things in the line items.
And, and we'll talk about that tax revenue in just a second, but let's, do we want to, any other questions about the budget?
You said two hundred eighty-eight thousand?
It's two hundred.
And that's the general fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
Eight thousand.
Two hundred eighty-eight, a hundred and sixty-two thousand. It's on your top sheet.
Oh.
One thing we haven't discussed is employee wages. We have given them raises the past two years, but we haven't discussed it this year.
I didn't do any figures on raises. I, I figured you guys didn't wanna do that with the issue with the tax.
You wanna discuss that? I mean, it's a, a weird, I'd love to, but unless we can bring that tax line that function.
We raised them the last two years, however, before the last.
July one.
July one. However, the, before that, it had been over five years since they've received a pay increase.
What'd we, three percent last year?
I think we gave them fifty, fifty cents.
No, it was seventy-five, it's seventy-five cents.
Oh, that's right.
Flat, we had a flat.
I mean, I can do the figures on them if you want.
I'd like to see them, I think, yeah.
What do you want me to do figures on?
I'd like to see at least fifty cents if we could.
Let's do seventy-five.
Seventy-five cents or like a two percent, then we can compare.
Yeah, that's what we did last, yeah.
So what's the seventy-five cents?
Do you know what the start is, do you?
A flat to increase to seventy-five percent to each.
I don't, as far as raises, I don't.
Seventy-five cents to each person per hour.
Per hour, seventy-five cents per hour, okay. Yeah.
Okay, um, so you've got your current budget. I'll give you one with two percent raise and one with seventy-five cents. Is that good?
Yeah.
So how do we handle it?
I'm seeing what, you're thinking past this on first reading?
Right, and then we can, I can get you a full budget that's got the two percent, a full budget with the, um, seventy-five, and then just what we've got here. Unless you guys won't have any other changes that you wanna make in this current one.
Okay, so can I have a motion that we accept this budget, knowing that we may amend it with the new?
Sure.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Any discussion, Heather? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
No, abstention. Okay, so we, it's passed on first reading and on the, the second reading on July, uh, June eighteen.
Eighteen.
Do you have any additions, we should bring in those for the increase? All right, the next item is local option sales tax. I, I do wanna, I've done a little research, I'll share with you before we get it, or do it well. Should we make a motion first and then talk about this? Could, could I have a motion first that we accept it and second, then we'll discuss?
Motion, we accept.
And a second on that, Heather? On the local option sales tax ordinance that we have here?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Then we can discuss it. So let me just show you what I found, um, historically. Back in, just, just, this whole thing came about by the legislature back in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe it is. They, they gave the options to all the cities and councils to add, counties to add seventy-five point oh oh oh, oh oh seventy-five, it's three quarters of cents, basically, to, to every dollar. And anything that's sold locally for sales tax, as you know, our only two main revenue streams are property tax and sales tax. So if we just figure this out, say you pay ten dollars at Walmart, all you're gonna pay is seven point five percent on that.
Seven cents.
That's what we were paying before. It's, it's been doing, doing this for what, twenty years, we've been paying that. Hundred dollars, you're getting seventy-five cents, basically. But if you add up everything that we've had in Carthage over the, the last year, and what we'll be losing by dropping that four, three quarters of a cent, it's almost four hundred thousand. Cause we gave you these last time and just up through February, we'll be losing three hundred and eighty thousand. That's what Leanne Williams sent to us, and this board does this to all of you. The county's gonna be losing almost eight hundred thousand because of this. So we really need this money back if we're not, I mean, we're already two hundred and whatever into our reserve. We can't, we can't function that way. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, um, the city, actually under David Bowman as mayor, had their own ordinance, they passed it. To say they wanted that local option sales tax point oh oh seventy-five. And they passed it, was getting ready to do their own referendum just for the city of Carthage. Well, I don't know how this happened, but a year, almost a year later, over a year later, in nineteen ninety-nine September, the county suddenly has this ordinance that they passed to do, to do the same thing. So I guess they just stripped away Carthage right to this and put it on a referendum, um, that was on March fourteenth, two thousand. And that's how they got the major share of that point oh oh five or three quarters of a cent to them. So that's how it's been broken up ever since then. They got their share for education, whatever, and, and believe me, nobody can kinda figure out that equation. And we still haven't figured out how it's been broken down. But theoretically, we were supposed to have gotten a half to each local city wherever the sales was produced, whether it was here or, or Gorgonsville or South Carthage. And the other half went to the county for their education, whatever they were trying to do. Well, as you know, that came up for a vote last fall. Just to show you every, here, here's the other statistics. Out of all the cities in Tennessee, four hundred thirteen have the nine point seven five sales tax that we've been having all these years. Sixty-one counties have it. So everybody jumped on the wagon wagon and has had this for the twenty years that it's been there. All we're asking is, let's have this option to put it back on again and leave it up to the citizens to vote on whether they wanna do that. So the ordinance would read, you've got a copy of it there. Basically, it's just to put this sales tax three quarters of a cent back on to Carthage. Now, this county may jump ahead of us again, but at least we've, we'll try to see what we can do about it. And this would be the first reading of this ordinance. Anyway, that's what I'd like to put out there, because otherwise, fair honestly, I don't know how we can repeal this money that we're gonna be losing. We have a motion and a little, any further discussion on this for the first reading?
I'll, I'll say that, uh, six months ago, citizens in Carthage voted to repeal this. And we haven't even made it six months and we're already trying to put it back so that we vote on this. Second off, I don't see why, how we can punish the taxpayers on our budget deficit. I, I wanna look through this budget and find that two hundred sixty thousand dollars. And I don't think it's too bad, and again, I'm.
I'm sorry, which, which two hundred are you talking about?
The deficit part.
But that we're gonna have to put into reserves.
And, and I'll ask you questions on it too, so that way I'm not misquoting things. But I wanna try to, or two hundred eighty-eight, I'm sorry. I wanna find that money if I can without punishing the taxpayers. And I, I don't, I don't think it's fair for, for me to go and say, "Well, let's just go ahead and put this on there", when I haven't done my due diligence and gone and picked this budget apart. I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayer, and especially when they just voted to get rid of it.
But if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but we know where it is. It's because we're losing over three, over, almost four hundred thousand dollars next year.
So let's find it here. Let's, let's pick this budget apart, let's find it, you know? And I, I'm not saying you haven't, but.
But, but that, that is the loss, the four hundred thousand dollars is the loss. Am I missing something here?
I was just gonna suggest that if you let Councilman Ebel speak and complete his.
Oh, sure, okay, I'm sorry, I just, okay, go right again, I'm.
Cause I know you've asked me to, you know, talk about.
A lot of times, the citizens will vote against taxes because they feel the government is not spending their money wisely. And so if the government's not been spending their money wisely, then they have that right to vote against the tax. And I, I'm not gonna sit here and say, "Well, let's go ahead and do that." They wanna cut back expenses. And so I'm gonna go along with the citizens and work to cut back these expenses and figure out how to do that with that, with that money in the general fund. And that's just my statement. I'm just making a statement, if y'all wanna rebuttal, that's fine. That's just where I stand on it.
Yes, Sam.
The constituents, and I'm not, I'm not dispelling what you're saying, but the constituents that I've talked to, I've talked to quite a few, state that they would rather see the three quarters of a cent sales tax as opposed to the possibility of raising,
That's right.
uh, property taxes. And you also need to keep in mind, and this is a, I'll throw this, uh, percentage out, and it's not proven, but I've heard it stated that probably sixty percent of the sales tax that we collect inside this town but I've heard it stated that probably 60% of the sales tax that we collect inside this town comes from people, not only outside of the town, but quite often outside of the county. People coming in to go to Saveway, or to go to Tractor Supply, or wherever, Walmart. And that's money that they're coming in and they're using our roads, they're using our police and everything, and fire protection, and, uh, it's a way for them to pay for some of it.
Now, if you, if you were talking about cutting property taxes and then increasing sales tax, you got me right there. I'm all for it. Property taxes are not a voluntary tax. Sales taxes, if you don't wanna pay it, don't go spend money.
That's true.
But right now, no one's talking about cutting property taxes, so-
We're talking, what the, the constituents are talking about is not having to raise it though, 'cause they see the-
I, I, yeah, I get you. And that's, again, it's counted.
Could I point out also, when, when that vote came up last year, these numbers, nobody ran the numbers to tell the commissioners, this is what we could possibly lose. So, they put it on, a referendum on, nobody ran the numbers to show the citizens voting, this is what you're gonna lose. I don't think, I didn't understand what all this meant, it was just, there were no numbers. And I hate to say this, but there was also a, an article in the Courier that says, this is our great chance to not have taxes, they had cut past taxes, and, but there were no numbers in here what would be the effect of doing that. So, I understand what you're saying, the citizens voted, but again, did we get transparency in what we were voting for? No, we didn't. We had, no numbers given to us to say, oh, you mean, I'm gonna lose $400,000 here in Carthage if I vote for this? All of it, what do we, I mean, nothing was given to us. So, I'm just saying, let's give them an opportunity to say, here's the actual numbers.
That's just it, we're not voting to raise the tax, we're voting for them to, the opportunities to look at the numbers, see what's happening.
Can you, can you?
And make a, an educated decision.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
And, and I just wanna point this out to you, the other local governments around here are wanting to put it on a referendum too. So, it's not like we just-
They're all voting to do it, yes.
It's not like it's just our situation that we just blow, we wanna get that money back. It's, it's a problem, and it's hitting all of, all of the communities.
Right, it is.
So, and we had the, the meeting the other night with different citizens that came in and talked to the mayor, and there wasn't a single person in there that realized the effect of it. I mean, they were appalled to realize just how much the towns were gonna be losing by not having that sales tax. They just thought, hey, I'm not gonna have to pay as much when I go shop. So, just something to keep in mind.
And this is just the first reading of the ordinance, there'll be a second reading, public hearing on the June 18th, but at least, if we vote on it tonight, we get the possibility of at least giving the citizens a chance to say, how to say it is again, with, with full knowledge of what they're, what they're voting for this time. Which, which, I mean, I'm all for the transparency, we had no transparency last time when we voted for this. If I had known the citizens will lose this much, I would've been out knocking on doors for you, because this, this is hard.
I just have a question, I'm not opposed to it at all, but I do have a question about how it's to be divided, because that's been very confusing to me, and there's actually a judge's order that stated between the cities and the county how it was supposed to be divided. So, I like, I don't mind doing the first reading, but I really would like to have more explanation.
For this reading, it's not-
It's kind of confusing.
This particular reading doesn't even include the county. Each of the cities is doing their own ordinance. If the county wants to jump in with theirs, they wanna do it.
But there's already an order in place that states how it's supposed to be, there's a judge's order.
But this, I believe this is different, isn't it?
Like you were saying with transparency, I would say that she's right on that. If you're gonna ask the citizens to do it, don't put that money out there as a general, as a general, basically say, what percentage of that money is gonna be spent for what, like, how is it allocated?
No, I'm not talking about how is it allocated, I'm talking about how is it divided between municipalities and counties.
But this is, that, that one's gone, that's been voted down, this is a brand new ordinance.
That's not my understanding of the-
Yeah, no, this is a brand new ordinance.
Who could we get to come in and, and explain it all?
Leanne was explaining it to me this week, she showed me a copy of the judge's order, 'cause it was already questioned.
Yeah.
I don't know if Leanne could come, or would come or not, she's been very helpful to all of us who have questions to answer them, and she's more knowledgeable than anybody.
I did ask her to come to the workshop, she couldn't do it, so that would've been very helpful.
I like, I like when you can come and explain.
But maybe we could see if she could come and explain it a little bit more.
If she could explain.
Well, if we vote this in though, uh, if we vote this what, the way it's read right, uh, written right here, the county won't be involved with it.
That's right.
It would be just the city.
Well, she said part of it has to go to, absolutely, has to go to the school system.
I believe that was the old one, that we just-
That was old, but this one, now, this, this is bare.
Mr. Jacob, this, excuse me.
If I might, your, you, your, your county has gone down to 2%, okay? You, that, of that 2%, the county still gets a portion of that 2% for education, and for the county. That, and it was done at different times, and if you, and I know the trustee had, had kinda laid out when first 1% happened, when the second 1% happened, and when the three quarters percent happened. The only thing that got changed is that it went from 2.75 down to 2. So, all of that, what was in place for 2% stays in place. None of that changes. What does change is what, the, the point 75, where it goes, and what it's used for. Because the county has, by virtue of the referendum last fall, forfeited that point 75.
That's right.
I don't care what the judge's order might say as it regards, because the referendum overrides the judge's order on the point 75.
Can that, what can that point 75 basically see as, however they wanna allocate that?
Yes. Yes, and it would be monies that you would put into the general fund, so that the things that have been neglected, or have been held back because you didn't have additional revenue to repair, replace, you may very well now have some additional revenue.
Water lines, the fire hydrants.
Well, not on-
Not water lines.
Not on water lines.
Different money.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, that's been changed.
I don't wanna be, I don't wanna go to the controllers office.
Not water and sewer. Not water and sewer.
It's like a $10,000 washer for the fire department, I have somebody to cover that.
It might be hydrants, but not, not water lines.
Can we make a vote then?
Okay, just so we're all clear, this is just for Carthage we're voting for, not for the county or any of us, to bring back the three quarters of a cent here, right here in Carthage, just-
We're voting for a referendum to let the citizens decide.
Right.
Right.
This is just an ordinance to, to do a referendum on the ballot.
And I think it needs to be stated too, and this was an estimate that we talked about the other day, was that, uh, a referendum will essentially cost the city, I would think, about $20,000.
If it's separate, if we wait till March for the primary election, we wouldn't have to pay for it, but then we've lost all those months, then we've lost all those months of revenue if we could pass it, so, yes.
So, you recommend to go ahead and do a special?
Well, we just, first have to pass the ordinance, then we can decide when it's done. The Gordonsville is, they're there in August, they're doing a referendum election in August, and I don't know about South Carthage, if they're voting on this tonight also.
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, they voted, I talked to Amy today, they're gonna vote on this tonight also, on their own version of the ordinance. So, everybody's doing it, hopefully to get a referendum on, and see if the citizens will help us put this back on. It, it's not anything, we're not increasing, it's the same thing we've been paying, it's just keeping it there, basically. Okay, do I, do I have?
We already have a motion in a second.
Okay, any further discussion about the passing on first reading this ordinance to go to order referendum? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay, so we have a passing of the first reading. Second reading will, and a public hearing will be on June 15th, so the people can-
18th.
18th, excuse me.
18th.
June 18th, June 15th here.